I'll call a meeting to order. And the first order of business this evening is the reading approval of the minutes from our March twenty-sixth meeting, which we have all received electronically. So are there any additions or corrections? If not, do I hear a motion to waive the reading and approve? Oh, in April twenty-third also, right. Yes? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Petitions. Number one on the agenda is case twenty-two-four-two at ten Wesley Street. The petitioner is Jose Sanchez.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thomas Curran, counsel to Pastor Jose Sanchez of the Ministerial International. Thank you. Here for major site plan review, we have received a special permit from the ZBA with regard to the parking in both the interior of the building and as well as the parking on the adjacent property that's under common ownership. That additional parking provides for sufficient parking for the property load. We've also provided engineering plans, which had been drawn by our environmental consultant, civil environmental consultants, which we're working at now on the screen, the existing site plan. Is the proposed site plan is on the screen now and it shows Clyde Street, nineteen twenty-three Clyde Street, as well as the ten Wesley Street. Also provided a lighting plan, as well as... These are the details. Should have that in your packet of details of the our environmental plan. This is our lighting plan, which has been modified from the original lighting plan to minimize any effect on the neighbors. So the new lighting plan faces all lights are facing inward to the property and away from away from the neighboring property at fifteen Clyde Street. We also have provided for fencing between the property on the property lines to avoid any of these, any adverse lighting effects outside the property, both on Revere Beach Parkway and the property at fifteen Clyde. And we've also provided, and as you can see that there is, we have some on the lighting plan, we have some of the vegetation showing, but we've also provided a landscaping plan that goes into more detail of exactly the landscaping that's going to be planted throughout the throughout the parking lot and surrounding the property at nineteen Clyde, as well as the on the Wesley Street side, which would be the entrance onto the into the property. The entrance and egress are all going to come through the ten Clyde Street side of the property. The, there is an egress, a second egress on between fifteen Clyde and nineteen Clyde, but that's going to be solely used for the two parking spots, egress for the parking spots between those two properties. The main entrance and exit will be on ten Clyde. And do we have the, do we have the landscaping plan, John?
I don't. I don't have it.
Okay.
Is it the one that shows the circulation, vehicular circulation of the site?
Oh, that was the parking plan. Oh, I'm sorry, there is.
That's existing.
Okay. Is this the one you're looking for?
Yeah. If you can zoom it out a little bit and hit Control Negative and make the image fit on the screen.
I'm sorry, I saw you zooming in.
Yeah. If you hit Control Negative, see what that does? Everything's more, yeah. Yeah, because I see one out. That looked like it did. So you can see the whole.
Control Negative will fill it.
Yeah. Yep, that's good.
So the landscaping plans will show, will show a new wood fence surrounding the exterior of the property along the sidewalk, going from the original entrance with the main entrance on ten Wesley Street, all the way around the property and in front of nineteen Clyde. There'll be specimen trees, two in the on the Clyde Street property, and then five specimen trees on the border of, three along the border of Wesley Street, and then two interior, one against the building and one out in the in the main parking lot. There'll also be, it shows this bluegrass lawn area, again, on the exterior of the parking, between the parking and the street, or parking in the sidewalk, and also there's planting beds on the on the exterior of the parking spaces between the parking spaces and the and the fence. So that's, there we have it.
That's the landscaping plan?
That's the landscaping plan. And as you can see, there's quite a bit of vegetation planted on the Wesley Street side and also on the nineteen Clyde Street. And you'll see the fence, the wooden fence, all the way around the property.
Is there any room for vegetation on the far side of the fence? Like, what will passersby see when they are driving down Revere Beach Parkway?
There'll be the wooden fence. There, there's, the wooden fence will be right up against the sidewalk. So they'll see the wooden fence, and they may see the tops of the specimen trees over the fence.
How tall is the fence?
The fence is, I believe it's a six-foot fence, right on the property line. So eventually those those specimen trees, you'll you'll see them above, but from Revere Beach Parkway, there'll be the sidewalk, then the fence. There won't be any anything in between. And again, there'll be two more specimen trees on the interior, one beside the building and one kind of in right in the middle of the the parking as you come around those space number, I think it's base number eleven.
Do you have any visuals that show what the proposed fence looks like? Just because it's going to be such, there's high visibility there and it, you know, we want to promote something that's aesthetically pleasing.
Right.
Especially if there's no plantings that are on that side of the fence.
Well, it's going to be, it's, it, there's a chain link fence there now, that's going to be removed and it's going to be a brand-new wood fence, you know, that that will go from, like I said, from the entrance in ten Wesley, all the way around the corner. So it'll be, it'll be consistent throughout the, when you come around the corner on Revere Beach Parkway, that's, you'll see the same fencing throughout the drive past the property. So it'll be a, it'll be a, you know, a very visually pleasing fence, brand-new wood, stained wood, and and it should be very attractive. I'm sorry, I don't have a rendering to show you, but it'll it'll be a very high-quality, very attractive wood fence.
Have they decided on the type of wood or what color?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Thank you. The issue that I'm having sort of with the fence is that it's going to get tagged. It's going to get tagged. Even though it's a church, you have a way on the outside, a big problem, and it's very, and that means you're going to have to paint it all the time, because if it's wood, you can't get rid of paint. So I think another element, I don't understand why you didn't use iron or something that would be open so that you could see the parking lot, but that's, I understand it's probably an economical choice, but I think that fence is going to get tagged. So should keep that in mind and figure, it's, and, you know, six feet isn't very high. So that's the other issue. It's not a very high fence, so. And did you guys put in the bike rack?
Yes. On the, it is on the new parking plan. And I believe it's, it's on the, you could see it on this plan, it is on the side of the deck on the nineteen Wesley Street. You'll see that the bike rack is on the left-hand side.
It would be helpful.
Right there.
Okay. Thank you.
And we have a parking plan whereby there, there for both interior and exterior parking. That was a concern, so we're going to have at least three valet parking personnel for the interior parking, and two personnel will be available on the exterior to kind of manage the parking flow, because they're, all of the entrance and egress are going to happen through ten Wesley Street. And those, those will be there at least one hour prior to the service until all vehicles are removed from the garage after service.
And is there a gate?
I'm sorry?
Is there a gate? So if somebody, if when there's not service, if somebody is going to go in there and park overnight?
Yes, there is a gate. There'll be a gate at the ten Wesley Street. And then there's, the garage will have obviously a, an entry door.
What is the hatched area in the middle of the parking lot?
I'm sorry?
What is that representing?
It's the underground leaching chambers.
That's the...
Oh, the retentions, okay.
Yeah, that's the...
The drainage system.
Yes, the drainage that, that's an overlay from the environmental consultants. And as you see, we, we did relocate the handicap parking spot seventeen, sixteen and seventeen, over closer to the to the ramp.
Would it, would it be possible to look at the plans that you have? Just, it's easier to quickly flip through them. Oh, thanks, John. Are these the same ones? Okay, I just want to see the date. These are, you know, I don't, I don't see a date. I, well, I, the plans that you had up on the screen, it was easier to see.
Do you have a copy of the landscaping plan there?
Yeah.
As I have it, it...
The landscape plan is the one that's easiest to understand, but it's the, okay. Yep. Okay, well, I don't have any major concerns, other than the, what that fence is going to look like, because there's so many people that are going to be driving by, but I would like to make a motion to approve this for recommendation.
This is a public hearing.
Oh. Is that Tuck to open it up?
Are you following your questions? Yes.
I'm confused. So we're going to open it up to the public for their comments, correct?
Say what? Okay, this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public here this evening who would like to address the board? If so, please raise your hand, so I can see how many. Can I hear?
Yeah, no, I can't.
Can you hear now? Sorry. This is a public hearing, and if there are members of the public here this evening who would like to speak to the board regarding this proposal, would you please raise your hand, so I can see how many people are interested? Don't see any.
Okay. Let's go down.
You? No. Good thing this isn't an auction. So I'm going to simultaneously open and close the public hearing, or the public speaking part of this meeting. Excuse me. Motion is on the floor, and is being...
I'll second it.
And is made and seconded that, and I assume you're concluding these.
I have a mouthful here. Okay. With the following conditions, the standard conditions as applicable, the existing chain link, chain link fence on the southwesterly side of the parcel shall be removed, and a new fence placed at the back of the sidewalk along Revere Beach Parkway to provide for the full width of the parking aisle shown on the plan. There shall be no direct entry or exit from Revere Beach Parkway. The primary access to the site shall be from the Wesley Street entry. The drive at nineteen Clyde Street shall be used only for access or egress from the two tandem spaces associated with the Clyde Street curb cut. There shall be no general through-traffic or general access or egress via the Clyde Street entrance. Traffic access patterns, et cetera, left and right arrows shall be marked on the pavement at the entry drive from Wesley Street. Stop signs shall be placed at the exit on each drive. There shall be good quality, there shall be a good quality opaque fence along the property line of the abutting fifteen Clyde Street property to shade that site from vehicular lights. The dumpster shall be screened with a good quality opaque fence to improve the aesthetic and to contain trash and wind-blown debris. All exterior lighting shall be shielded to prevent the light from shining on abutters or adjacent roadways, and all exterior lighting shall meet international dark sky standards. You should submit a storm, a drainage and stormwater management plan to the permitting and land use, land use planning department for review and approval, which, has that already been submitted? Okay. To the extent practical, the petitioner shall encourage parishioners to park on-site and discourage on-street parking by the parishioners. And one last condition we'd like to apply to this list is to have a design review for the fence along the publicly visible part of the site, along Revere Beach Parkway.
Right. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tuck, can I propose...
You can now submit to the conservation commission.
Yes.
Thank you. Tuck.
Can I propose that we proceed on to the Energizer Storage case, because it sounds like that case is going to continue into July, just so I can all go home.
Okay.
Any objections to that? Moving to case twenty-four...
I don't want to keep people here if they don't have to present.
Thank you, and good luck.
You're welcome.
I, I had a lot of pieces.
It has to go to that guy.
Yeah. Yes, but there's, what, three other cases in front of them? Yeah, there's, but that's just, just showing stuff.
Terrific, thank you. Eric, make a motion.
Did you request a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's no objection to that. Okay, we're going to skip ahead on the agenda to case twenty-four oh-nine at two eighty-four Eastern Avenue, and the petitioner is Energizer Storage LLC.
Are we continuing till July?
Yeah, are we just continuing this till Ju- July? Is this, you know what this goes? That's how we met.
They were aware of this moving into July, yes?
Yes, yeah. Okay, cool. Just confirming.
I mean, is that what they're like, or is that what they're wanting to propose? Should I just do it?
Sorry.
Can we do everything in July? Can we just do everything in July? Can we just send a one, say we'll send it all?
Oh, okay. So we're just going to post everything to July, but that's okay. It's okay.
Oops. What was the next one?
All right. Thanks, everyone. My name's Jonathan Poor, one of the founders and partners at Flatiron Energy.
And I'm Brett Cullen, also a co-founder and partner in the company.
And Alex Mathis behind us is our head of engineering. Thank you for providing us the opportunity. Too many listening devices, sorry. Thank you for providing us the opportunity this evening. Jonathan Preece mentioned that we should provide a brief overview of the company and the project, and also wanted to say thank you to the folks that were able to come out to the site walk and tour the facility. Appreciate you spending some of your Saturday morning with us. What I'd like to talk to you about today is just a little brief overview of the firm, why energy storage is important, the value of it to the community and the broader environment, provide some updates and overview of the project, and then talk about safety associated with the project. Just a bit about us. Flatiron Energy is a energy storage developer, owner and operator, so we plan on owning and operating the energy storage systems that we develop. We have offices in Boston, New York City, and Boulder, Colorado. Couple of things about us that I think is, makes us very different from other developers. One is we're a certified B Corp, so we've gone to a lot of, you know, time and effort to obtain that certification, and really kind of focus on highly ethical standards, transparency, how we interact with communities that we develop projects in, and it's, you know, something that we take very seriously. Related to our mission, you know, there's a couple of things that are critical for us. One is climate change, and the second piece is really kind of developing communities and, you know, making communities better than we came in, both from an environmental perspective, but just also from economic and the footprint that we leave behind. What we do, as we obviously know, we develop energy storage projects. We develop in areas that we believe have an opportunity for improvement, and we think are underutilized spaces. A number of our projects are in very kind of industrial areas, old power plants, old industrial areas in and around. industrial areas in and around Boston, Connecticut. We're also developing projects throughout New York City, primarily in Brooklyn, Queens, and the Bronx. The main things are really, you know, benefiting the environment as well as the electrical system, the reliability and the resilience of that local electrical system, and also, as I said before, really improving the neighborhood and as much kind of environmental improvements as we can make to the site as possible. In terms of what we're going to talk about tonight, and some of the things we've been working on with the city and various community-based organizations for a number, at least over a year now, is, you know, kind of stakeholder engagement. We've been out meeting with all of the abutters, a number of the other residents in the area, schools, condo associations, areas that can view the site to talk about it, explain it, get their feedback. We spent a lot of time with various CBOs, as I mentioned, with Chelsea Black Community, a lot of collaborative environmental justice groups, and a lot of stakeholder engagement. We have a pilot that we've proposed to the city that has some very, you know, meaningful revenue for the city. We also have a host community agreement that we have been discussing with various community-based organizations and with the city. That's intended for workforce training. The idea is to train folks in hard skills, like electrical work, HVAC work at technical schools, like the Peterson School or Bunker Hill Community College, and so with the project. We plan on developing a very detailed construction management plan, so, you know, everyone knows in the city what's being built, when, and how. You know, very important to us also is the quality control and the labor that's used for constructing the project. As we've said before, very supportive of union involvement in these projects. We've reached out to a number of the unions and have also talked to them about the training opportunities and how we can incorporate that into the projects. It's going to be a while before we would get into construction. There's, you know, a lot of permitting, engineering, procurement to get through, so we do feel like there's an opportunity for people within Chelsea and within the community to get the necessary training and hopefully, you know, be able to work on these projects possibly. We'll be developing an emergency management plan. We recognize this is infrastructure, this is electrical infrastructure. It's connecting into the electric transmission system, so there will be, you know, an emergency management plan, which our safety consultants and experts are working on, that will be shared with the town, with the fire department, and other first responders. And the city is also going to have their own consultant and expert consultant that can review those documents and talk to the fire department, ask us questions, so there's an opportunity for that subject matter expert peer review. And then lastly, we've been meeting a lot with the fire department and the chief about the project. We've been going over our preliminary designs and our current designs, getting their feedback, reviewing the drawings in detail, so we see that as just a, you know, a very long dialogue and relationship as we develop the project and continue to get their feedback. Just a little bit about energy storage, and, you know, kind of why it's important to Chelsea. Little bit of a detailed map, but as you can see, this is a map of Chelsea. You can see along the Chelsea Creek. The purple line that kind of runs across the map, that is the electric transmission system, so it's a hundred and fifteen kilovolt line. Think of that kind of as the highway, if you will. So that's the major, that's the major line that provides electricity to Chelsea, Everett, you know, you can move all the way up north, Lynn, those areas, and that originally emanated from like the Mystic Generating Station and that area. It's also parallel to the MBTA tracks. And then you can see the red and darker red lines, those are the higher voltage distribution lines that serve the city, and the smaller green ones are less voltage. But this is a, you know, it's a very instrumental area, because you have the Chelsea substation right here that attaches to this line, and the property, which we'll show you in a little bit, or you saw during the site walk, is directly adjacent to that electric transmission substation. So there's really only, there's only so many spots in the city and the area that can basically handle the charging and discharging of a battery, but it provides a lot of value to Chelsea in terms of resilience and reliability, being in that location where you could have an energy storage system. I think a lot of folks saw this, but this is a more detailed view, so the purple line again is the electric transmission line. The Eversource Chelsea Substation is right there. The property that we have an option to purchase on is two eighty-four Eastern Avenue. The property owns Willoughby Street. It has several easements with Eversource, the MWRA, and also, I believe, with a DPW for sewer lines and those type of things, so, you know, kind of a very industrial infrastructure site in nature, given its location, and it's really, you know, a great location for energy storage for a couple of reasons. One, you're industrial zoned, there's an opportunity to really kind of make this site look a lot better, do a lot of greening, a lot of improvement from the street views, as well as the views from the folks on the hill looking down on the site. And most, you know, maybe not most, but equally important is we're abutting the electric substation, so we can run a underground line to that substation and interconnect to that. We don't have to add any aerial lines or really any more infrastructure than that. The property is about three point seven acres. We'll show you some layout drawings. The majority of the property will take up a rectangular shape and go front to back from eastern back towards the MBTA tracks. The project's designed to be about two hundred and fifty megawatts, and that would be a four-hour battery, meaning the battery could discharge two hundred and fifty megawatts for four hours, or it could charge two hundred and fifty megawatts for four hours. It could also discharge less energy over time, or charge less energy over time, and as I talked about a little bit, there's a couple of different things that batteries can do, either, you know, charging and discharging, like I just mentioned, would be something that like the Massachusetts Clean Peak Program is looking for, or we could charge small amounts and kind of act more like a shock absorber for the grid to keep it stabilized and in frequency. This is a overview of our draft site layout. This is kind of overlaid on the Google Maps, but as I mentioned, the main building will be two stories each. The building will have a number of what we're calling compartments, and areas where the batteries will be installed, as well as the balance of plant. And then on the outside of the building, you'll have inverters, and the inverters, the energy comes off the grid as AC or alternating current. It has to be converted into direct current to be stored in a battery, so those inverters change from AC to DC, DC back to AC, for the battery to be able to operate and work with the grid. And then in that corner, there'll be some additional electrical infrastructure, mainly some transformers to change the voltage of the equipment, monitoring equipment, and some switching, which is customary of any energy storage system. There'll be, the access to the site will be along Willoughby Road, and there will also be a site, which will be a new curb cut off Eastern Avenue, that will go along the backside of the, or the north side of the building. And really, that's for just access and safety, so there's good access to the site.
How many people will be working at the site?
So during construction, there'll be, you know, I'd say easily, you know, over a hundred, maybe at peak times, you know, a hundred and twenty-five. And that construction is most likely going to go on for about two years, and that will ebb and flow depending on, you know, what particular part is being constructed. And then after the project is operational, it will be mainly monitored remotely. There will be operation and maintenance crews that will be checking on the building, doing planned maintenance, scheduled maintenance. Some of those will be from our OEMs that we have warranties with and things like that. Others will be Flatiron Energy employees, and I imagine that number to be, you know, relatively small, probably a handful, and they'll probably be supporting multiple sites within Boston, Massachusetts area. These are some draft renderings of the building, and again, these are, these are drafts, these are preliminary. This is a view from Eastern Avenue. This is where the new entrance would be. The chain link fence on the right, just so you know, that's, that's the neighbor's property. That's not our property, but the idea is that we have a, you know, a very good-looking, nice building that will blend in. Our landscape architect has, you know, created drafts, which I believe you've, you've seen in the submittals, but, you know, opportunity to plant, you know, large trees, large bushes along that sidewalk. And what I'll do is, the next couple of slides will just kind of walk you around the building so you kind of get what it would look like from each vantage point, so obviously happy to take any questions as we go along. This is Eastern Avenue, and this would be looking down Willoughby Street, and as you can see, similar idea that we, you know, have as much vegetation and trees as we can inside the fence, and then this would be the road that would be going down. If you're going down this road, you bump into the MBTA tracks, and then the Chelsea Substation would be on your left. This is a view from Willoughby Street. As you can see, the building cuts in a little bit, makes a corner, so there is more opportunity for kind of green space, lawn, vegetation. As you can see, these, there's some different roll-up doors for delivery of equipment, installation, which would typically be, we'd be using forklifts for that. This is if you were like on the MBTA tracks and looking towards the property, so this is some of the switchgear and metering equipment and voltage equipment. This building on the, on the left, this small building right here, would just be a small control room building, which would have a lot of our, you know, computers, monitoring equipment, switchgear. The larger building in the back is the neighbors, just for a point of reference. And I believe-
Is it Eastern Mechanical? Is it Electric?
Excuse me, Eastern Electric. Eastern Electric is the, is the neighbors, and they, they do most of the lighting for Logan Airport, so, just a little bit of background.
I got a question. Can't you push the building back onto the site, so that Eastern Avenue has, has the green and not the parking, and not the parking lot? The parking lots, if there's only going to be literally two people in the building, if that's what you're talking about, and they're not going to be there mate on a daily basis?
Yeah, if you can go back-
So if, I don't understand.
Sure.
I get why you're building a big gray box.
Yeah.
I sort of understand that, but it is, you know-
Yeah, stop right there, yeah. So one of the, one of the challenges with the property is there is a sewer-
John, John, would you please bring the microphone with you?
No, no.
There's a handhold.
I can just do it sitting down, that's fine, that's fine. There's a dotted line right there, that's an existing sewer line that was built in eighteen eighty-seven, and is about six feet or so in diameter. I don't want to speak for the DPW, but there is a number of combined sewer efforts and infrastructure efforts around the sewer system. Right now, I believe that sewer at some point in time will, will no longer be part of the sewer system, but for the foreseeable future, it will be, and we looked at a number of different building options, and originally, we looked at moving the sewer. That's, that's not an option from, you know, just a practical perspective with construction schedules, budgets, and also just the, the nature of a infrastructure project like that for something that would be so temporary and will eventually, you know, be kind of aging infrastructure that's replaced. So that's, the sewer really kind of determined where the building could be located.
If they're going to replace the sewer sooner or later, then what's going to happen? Because this, with the technology you're talking about, this technology changes very quickly. We're not talking about technology that's going to be, so my concern is that Eastern Ave is going, what will, what will it look like in twenty years, or ten years? So this is a major league impact building. I understand the importance of what it is, but it is a big building, and it has not many aesthetics to it, so it would be nice if you could, so by pushing it back, at least we could have some green space on Eastern Ave. Literally, no one goes down Willow, so it's very nice that it looks great coming down Willow, but nobody goes down that street.
I'm going to put one more point to that.
So, and, and so I, you know, I know that aesthetics are not in our purview, but if we can push it back, and I get budgets, but the, listening to you saying that it's too expensive to move a pipe, it's kind of hard for me to grasp that.
Can I, do you mind if I jump in for a second on that? So we, we actually commissioned a separate engineering assessment with Westin and Sampson, which is the DPW's main contractor for long-term sewer planning in the city. So we've, we've investigated this from a number of angles, but I think that the conclusion, that was our sense too, is we really wanted to push it back as far as we possibly could, and that's actually what triggered the conversation about moving the sewer, and in short, the, I would say it's fair to characterize the, the feedback from the city, DBW, and I obviously don't want to speak too much for them, but, you know, certainly happy to have a conversation with them separately, but it's basically, don't, don't touch the sewer. There, it, this is a, this is the largest sewer main in the city of Chelsea. It is over a hundred thirty years old, and it is still operating, but to be frank, the condition of that sewer is such that the city would prefer not to touch that at this time, and from a construction perspective, seismic, et cetera, we've evaluated looking at, you know, different types of drilling for our proposed project, and in, in short, we were advised to stay at least eight feet away from that sewer line, and so it was really sort of stuck between a rock and a hard place, and that's, this is ultimately the best that we were able to come up with, you know, in consultation with DPW, our civil consultants, Westin and Sampson, and others, so it's, it's, but certainly, we tried to push it back as much as we could. Yeah, do you mind if I bring Alex up here for a second? Yeah, do you mind if I bring Alex up here for a second?
This is different.
I think the, sorry. The one thing I will note, this is part, not, again, not to speak to the DPW's plans, but my understanding, this will remain as a storm sewer when the combined sewer separation plan moves forward. So this is still going to be required for overflow events during storm, it just won't be used for combined. The challenge we have in terms of rerouting it, the existing site is about, I think it's eight to nine feet above sea level. The outfall location's at the Chelsea Creek, just across, was that the Gulfport? Yeah, across Eastern Avenue to the east. And we looked at rerouting it to bend the sewer essentially ninety degrees down and over, and there's just not enough gradient in order to do that.
So what about building over it?
I'm sorry, was it-
What about building over it?
Uh, the DPW needs access to this. The sewer, I believe, is approximately-
Isn't that why, isn't that what it tunnel does? You can build it over. I didn't say you had to build it level. Didn't say you had to build the, you could build it so that there's an arch over it. You could push it back.
So the challenge is with the weight of the structure and the foundation design, there's no way to span the sewer in order to safely do it from a constructibility standpoint. The challenge we would have and risk is a collapse from that standpoint due to the age and the design of the sewer. And we did evaluate looking at reinforcing and sweeps and the challenges due to the size of it and the access locations. We had no way of getting in to do the required work to reinforce it.
And I think just order, order of magnitude, and, you know, we haven't gotten any official estimates on it, but, you know, I believe the discussions were like above $30 million to move it. The other challenge with moving it is the sewer runs under the MBTA tracks, and in order to move the sewer, you would have to jack and bore underneath the MBTA tracks, which I think something that, again, again, I don't want to speak for them, but the, you know, the DPW, the MWRA, other organizations found that to be, you know, very high risk for something that was built in 1887. It's literally like a aqueduct, a, a brick aqueduct.
Can you speak into the microphone? I'm having a hard-
Oh, sorry. You know, it, it, just the fact that it was built so long ago, and, you know, just that the age, you know, the, the cost was estimated at over, I think around $30 million, just, just to move it. And then the second part was, it runs underneath the MBTA tracks, and in order to move the sewer, you would have to move the area underneath the tracks, which would require jacking and boring underneath the MBTA, which is-
Not going to happen.
I don't want to, I don't want to speak for others.
It, it also services 161 acres of, of the city, which is, makes it by far and away the most critical portion of the city sewer network, as, as we've come to understand. I believe it's District Eight, if I'm, District Eight, which, so that this is, then there are a number of other master plan-related engineering jobs that are coming up over the next five to 20 years that would, as Alex mentioned, begin to splice out this part of the sewer network and really frankly totally redesign it because I think there are concerns about the existing sewer infrastructure in place, let alone trying to move it or frankly doing anything with it.
We would-
We would love to move it.
We would love, yeah, or we would love it not to be there, but-
I just wanted to add one more point to Mimi's earlier point, and that was, if you can put the greenery on the outside of the fence, then the public can enjoy it more. When it's on the inside of the fence and it's not visible, no one's really in the building anyway.
Yeah.
So that would just be my-
Okay.
-recommendation, just swap the fence and the shrub location.
We, we should be able to do that.
Yeah, I would say our landscape designs are preliminary, and we, we have a long way to go on them.
Shows up in one of the-
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
The trees on the left side there-
Yeah.
Are visible, so put them on the outside.
Got it.
Appreciate that.
Just to touch on safety, I think was our, our last section. You know, we, we take safety very seriously. I've worked in the energy industry my whole life. You know, I've, I've seen a lot of people that have been, been hurt. I've been around a lot of big construction projects, so it's, it's really critical. You know, we, we think about it in, you know, a couple of different facets, but engineering and design, we've talked to the, you know, the fire chief and others about this, and have been very thoughtful about our design. We've been exceeding all of the federal standards. We've been working with all of these organizations, have a number of expert consultants that are on our team that, that specialize particularly in energy storage as well as first response. We work with a couple of companies that are former FDNY firefighters. We've been meeting with the Boston Fire and, and those groups. So a lot of, a lot of analysis, a lot of work that we're frankly still working on as we progress our designs. And we've been meeting with the Fire Department Chief, I'd say about every other month, and doing detailed design reviews, and we'll continue that as we progress our designs. And then as I talked about with construction, you know, very significant quality assurance, quality control, construction management plans. We have committed that we're going to work with the unions on these projects, make sure we have qualified people that have the appropriate training for these projects. And then lastly, is just the, the operations of, of the project. You know, as long-term owners and operators of the projects, myself, Brett, the team, some of the former companies we've been with, we've been around the operations of these projects, smaller projects, but in Massachusetts and New England. And, you know, I think really making sure that we've got the best plans in place, emergency response plans and so forth, which will be, which we're developing and will share with the city, you know, probably sometime in the mid-June timeframe, and then they'll do their peer review with their consultants. Probably just talk through this slide in the last slide. But yeah, again, following, you know, all of the, you know, best-in-class safety and fire codes for these types of applications in these buildings.
I think the only thing I would add to that is, we, we design not to the current standards, but to the next generation of standards, which I think really differentiates our company relative to even some of our peers in the storage industry. As John had mentioned, we work with, I, I would argue, the best-in-class team globally for this type of work. And this has been, you know, an area of major focus for us from an engineering standpoint from day one, and will continue to be. I think the, maybe the only, not related to this slide necessarily, but I just wanted to thank the carpenters' union for coming out tonight. And also just in terms of sort of some of the challenges we see in, in citing these types of projects generally in the Boston region. As, as some of you may know, Boston's largest power plant de-energized this week, and that represents over 50% of the greater Boston metro area's electric load. It's called Mystic Generating Station, owned by Exelon Generating Company. That, that power needs to be drawn from somewhere else. And so while energy storage obviously does not produce new electricity, it is, it is really important for this grid in transition. It does act as sort of a transmission line of sorts. It does help facilitate power flows more directly. There's a lot of other things besides real power that energy storage does in terms of services to the grid, and, and the grid has shown, you know, that it values these types of services. John mentioned some of them, but frequency regulation being one of them. And when it comes down to it, the, the Boston metro area has very few areas remaining that can physically handle new types of proposed projects that help enhance reliability for the greater Boston area's network. And the Chelsea Substation is one of the very few that can from a, from a technical perspective, so. And I just appreciate the time and, and also for bumping us up the agenda. I know you guys are very busy and you have a lot of great projects to review, and just appreciate the time today.
I have one suggestion. Have you thought about doing what they did to the tanks on Dorchester and have it, have the building painted by an artist?
We have discussed that with a couple of groups. And again, I don't want you to think that, like, the-
I understand if you can't move the building.
No, 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 no.
I get it, I get it.
No, on the facade. I think he was going to comment on the facade. Very preliminary.
Those are very preliminary rendering, so I think there's a great opportunity for individuals, groups to kind of get their fingerprints on this, and, you know, I think we'll, we'll continue to do that.
You could make it the spear, like it is in Vegas.
Yeah.
And nobody can go inside.
Yeah, we, if a mural is, you know, if that, if that's, you know, something that the city prefers, that's certainly something we're, we, you know, we would definitely be fine.
I'm not thinking of a mural, I'm thinking of something very, that the whole artist would paint the building.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's certainly on the table.
Not on, yeah, so, yeah.
Certainly.
Because if it's gonna not have any windows and understandably that that's what the building needs, I get that. You're designing from the inside out, not the outside in. I get it. Time to, time to bring in some, if it's going to be there for 30 years, you gotta do something for it.
Hi, I have a question for, actually, going back to the green space and the fence, and this is very minor, but moving the fence so that people have access to green space is a very lovely idea. My experience in Chelsea is that people will take their dogs there, garbage will end up there. So if you were to move back the fence so that people would have access to it, which is a very, I think that's, that would be lovely, would there be any kind of maintenance around cleaning up?
Yes.
Okay. It's on words.
Regularly.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll have the site maintained regularly.
So the area is in a floodplain. What kind of preventative infrastructure is going to be put in place if there's a flood?
I'm going to punt that to Alex.
So in the set that we submitted in the architecture, there's the elevation views of the structure. If you look at base slab elevation, in terms of what the first floor will be, it's going to be elevated three feet above the floodplain. The electrical standard requires two feet, so we have one foot of extra feedboard above that. And then in terms of the substation, the equipment will be elevated up on the foundations and then the steel structures as well to keep it out of it. So we're designing essentially base flood elevation plus three is the minimum for the project.
Just like Seaport. That's where it is. It's going to flood. It's going to flood.
Anybody else? Okay, we, the, this is a public hearing. Excuse me. Are there any members of the public who would like to address this petition? You have to tell us your name and-
At the microphone.
At the microphone. Just say your name and where you live, and then you, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tiffany Moreira. I live on 38 Suffolk Street in Chelsea. My background's in aerospace engineering, and I, before that, I served in the Navy operating their nuclear power plant systems for about four years. I, this is my first time at one of these, so I don't know if this is the right forum, but I think I would like to hear more about the economic value that your project is bringing to Chelsea. Because I understand while the construction phase is around two years, and that is going to stimulate some economic activity here, I think my main concern is that in steady-state, normal operations, you know, you're not going to have, you're saying that this is not going to be manned all the time, right? So I think it seems, to everyone's point above here, you know, it's, you're already making an industrial space even more industrial and kind of an, you know, kind of an eyesore, right? So it doesn't seem, or to me, it seems like there should be more economic value that we can bring to Chelsea and what jobs this could provide. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you for your question. I'll answer it in a, a couple parts. I'd say, related to economic value, there is a pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes, which would be paid, that's estimated to be about $1.4 million a year in tax revenue that would go to the city of Chelsea per year for the life of the project. In addition to that, so in, just to give you a comparison, we would be one of the largest, I'm not sure, second, third, fourth, something to that degree, largest taxpayer in the city of Chelsea. The host community agreement, which would fund job training, is, it has not been approved, but it's been discussed with the city manager, city council, a number of community-based organizations. That is approximately $576,000 per year for the life of the project for job training. To give you order of magnitude, like, that's in the range of ARPA funding. So these, well, I do, I do recognize the, you know, the, the lack of full-time jobs. I think what we're trying to, to do, to make much more than whole, is, you know, the additional tax revenue to the, the city. I believe the tax revenue for the current owner of the property is about $74,000 per year. So it's a pretty significant increase for the city. You know, in terms of the building and the characteristics, the look of it, I would say that we're in, you know, a very preliminary stage.
A quick question. When you say that the pilot program, the host community agreement, would guarantee payments for the life of the project, do you mean the life of the construction phase?
No, the, the operating life, which is approximately 30 years.
Okay, thank you.
And same with the host community agreement.
I'm, just, just to add, it's probably obvious, but the, the host community agreement isn't, isn't a requirement for us per se as the proposed applicant. This is something that we think is the right thing to do, and we really want to incentivize, like, lo- local workforce development. And so the idea behind the host community agreement, and we've been working with the unions, we've been working with, as, as we mentioned before, La Collaborativa, Chelsea Black Community, and a number of other organizations in the, in the region. The idea is that the folks that are trained through this program could actually become workers on-site to construct the building. And so, you know, we really want to try and make it as local as possible to the, obviously, it's very challenging, you know, there's a lot of, it's very specialized work, as you, as you well know, but where we can train folks to do as much of the work locally we can, that's, that's what we're trying to strive for. Did that answer your question? Okay.
Would you like to speak?
My name is Caesar Rio, 77 Charles Street. I'm a union representative, and I'm here to vote in favor, or go in favor of this project since they're willing to commit to using responsible contractors. And I represent hundreds of union carpenters that live in the city of Chelsea, and they committed to using those residents to work on this project. So I, I think this would be a good project for the resident, so, yeah.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay. The city has hired a- Okay, the city has hired a consultant. And the results of that are expected before our July meeting. So it's been suggested that we not vote on this until we get to read the consultant's report. And the petitioner is aware of this adjustment. So I will entertain a motion to continue this until the July meeting.
I'll make a motion to continue till July meeting.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Wait, is it July or June?
July.
So it's two months away.
I, I completely thought it was June for a while.
I'm gonna say it's not there.
All right, moving down the agenda, next is case twenty-two-four-five at two-twenty-two Webster Avenue. Petitioner is Paulo Evangelista. Present? Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Paulo Evangelista and I live on two-twenty-two Webster Avenue. And currently, I don't have parking spot. And there is one parking spot on the street in front of the house. And I have a space inside the property. And then I made the, uh, the plan, which shows like a twenty-five feet curb cut and to make a driveway to park the car in front of, in front of the house.
The applicant has provided an updated plan, which unfortunately I did not include in this package. I'm sorry, I did not, I was not able to download on to the presentation tonight. The updated plan shows those two parking spaces moved to the far right.
Yes.
Well, if you have a printout of it, maybe we can just pass that.
Yes, I do have a printout.
A concern arose at the zoning board meeting that there was some discrepancy, discrepancy between what the applicant was describing and what the plan showed. The applicant was describing such that the door to the facility, to the structure, which is right here, would still be able to function, but with two parking spaces right there, it cannot. So he's asked to talk with me and provide an updated plan. He did, he moved the parking spaces further over so that, uh, front door is still available.
Do you have any other visuals that show the topography or? It's a sloping site.
Let me go to the photos.
So, I'm sorry, so the parking would be there in the front?
In the front, yes.
No, the walkway would still exist, the parking spots would be over here.
It's not clear from that photo. Is this gonna require a curb cut? And is there street parking on that side of the, the street?
There is one parking spot in front of the house on the street. So I'm gonna be providing two inside the property.
Okay, so taking a parking spot off, adding two parking spots.
Exactly.
I understand your dilemma and I appreciate the fact you're adding a parking space, but it, it's aesthetically, it's not pleasing. And Webster is an incredibly busy street and to have more traffic, it's already, when people try to come in and out of their parking spaces, you know, on their garages already, it causes traffic jams. I, uh, I, I under, again, I am very sympathetic to parking, but this is a project I just can't wrap my head around. I mean, it's a beautiful house, it's a very nice yard, and to make it a parking space just doesn't, there's nothing to the left or the right of you like that, so you'd be the only one doing it. It's, to me, it-
It, it's a two-family house.
I, I understand, I can see that it's a two, it's a, it, right. But there is, you know, you know, if, if you wanted to put, put a, to go to the back of the house, I might, but you can't because of the way the, the place is built. So, that's just my opinion. I don't know how other people feel.
It's, it's not in the character of Webster Street to have, there is some parking in front of residential properties, but I would say majority of properties on Webster do not have parking in front of them.
Most of the-
I didn't do a count, but, um-
Most of the property around me, they have, they have a parking. All the, all the houses around there. I'm the only one who doesn't have a parking, a driveway. There's some picture of the, the street too, you can show the pictures?
Yeah, I, that's not what I saw. I went up there a, a couple of days ago and I didn't get that impression. I got the impression that it was, most of them were like your house, but, uh, I could be wrong.
Now, if you go back, you're gonna see, uh, on both sides of the street, all the houses have a driveway and parking.
I know there are buildings that do.
Okay.
But it also appears that their property is bigger. You know, you, you're at that front yard where you're proposing to put the parking.
Yeah, mine is twenty-five feet.
It's very narrow. It is ver, a very narrow space for two parking spaces. And that's, I mean, I'm just looking, you know, the picture here with the property next door. I can see from this picture that it is, that the lot size is wider and is better able to accommodate, um, parking. Your property unfortunately is not. And I just, I cannot see approving or recommending approval for two parking, I mean, one, one I, I wouldn't like, but two, I, I can't see making a recommendation to approve two parking spots in that narrow yard.
The other concern is backing out onto Webster Street.
I mean, your neighbor has a place where they can do a, you know, three-point turn or something, but it's, it's just treacherous. And I, you know, there's a lot of proposals like this, I understand. We've got limited space for parking, it's a tough situation, but if everyone turned their yard into a parking spot, we'd have bigger problems. Bigger problems, including drainage concerns and everything else. So I am not in favor of this proposal.
I, yeah, I agree. I'm, uh, pretty torn. Adding a parking spot is great and all, but I do also have some concerns about its impact on, uh, the character of Webster Street. Also, I think fitting two cars is gonna be super tight. Also, it is gonna be challenging packing out because it is, it is a busy street. And, um, adding a single parking spot-
You're taking away a street parking.
Taking street parking off, adding a single parking spot. So adding a single parking spot isn't really doing anything either. So unfortunately, I don't think I can, um, approve this project either, unfortunately.
Are you making a motion?
All right, um, I will put forward a motion to not recommend approval to zoning.
I will second that motion.
Okay, moved and seconded, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll see you at the zoning board meeting here on June eleventh.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. All right, while we're on Webster Avenue, case twenty-two-four-seven at one-hundred-six Webster Avenue. Hector Lopez is the petitioner.
Hello, how you doing? What are you doing, everybody?
So explain your proposal.
Yeah, this is for, um, a special permit for back addition of one-hundred-six Webster Avenue, Chelsea, Massachusetts. So, um, very much the rooms are existing, so the addition, I think was a mis, a misunderstanding here because it says like a complete back addition, but the rooms are existing. The problem with the rooms is, is, um, they are long enough, but the width is less than five feet. So basically, what we are trying to do, we're gonna move the back wall like, uh, I think it's like thirty-two inches, as you can see in the plan, thirty-two, about two and a half feet.
Could you point to the site plan and maybe describe a lot of your-
I think-
Let me find the plans.
It's not, you don't have the original plan?
He's giving-
Yeah, that's the one. So we got the deck, the porch.
That's existing. Is there a proposed, a proposal?
It's existing, it's existing, yes.
Yeah, right there. It's at the back of the house.
Is there a full plan or just these partial plans of, of the proposed?
I'm sorry, what do you, what do you-
Well, those are just part plans, right? That's a first and second floor, just the rear, but it would be nice to see the whole floor plan.
There isn't any. There's just these elevations and those half-floor plans.
Yeah, I'm having a really hard time visualizing this, this project and what it is you're proposing to do.
Please, please take-
Can you grab the microphone, please?
Yeah, um, this is the, wait a minute, I got lost already. This is the area over here.
Where is the existing end of the house?
So years ago, all right, this used to be in storage, but right now, he has like three bedrooms. Like, like, like I'm saying, three bedroom little bedrooms. So he's trying to update those bedrooms, like bring everything up to code. And, and like I'm saying, we're gonna be moving the back wall, um, two and a half feet.
So where's like the living room? Is the kitchen, two bedrooms, a bath?
The first floor is two bedrooms.
Yes, but there's no living room.
No living room.
So all it is, is a two-bedroom with a kitchen?
Uh, the third floor, I mean, second and, I mean, second and third, it's two bedrooms and living room. So in the first floor, as you can see, he really, he really needs the, um, because he has no living room, basically.
So are you, are you proposing to add on to the rear of the building to each, on each floor?
Correct, first, correct.
So it will be what, an extra, another bedroom added to each floor?
Very much, very much, yes.
Okay, okay.
It's, I mean, it's not gonna be a like, like a complete bedroom. I mean, basically what he's looking is like, I mean, as a family room or something.
But an additional room-
Correct.
To each apartment on each floor. Okay. Can you give us that dimension, the added depth? Like, how much longer is the building getting when you do that?
The new construction is gonna be two and a half feet only.
Okay, but that makes, that allows the bedrooms to be code compliant?
Correct. And, and, I mean, of course, we're gonna bring everything up to, uh, up to code, like the electrical, like the electrical is gonna be done, like, uh, new, I mean, the insulation and like, very much everything. No, I mean, no hardwood floors. We're also gonna provide, uh, before June, I think, June twenty, I mean, June eight is the last meeting, I think. We're gonna provide more pictures because, um, Hector was supposed to provide, but I, I think he never did it for some reason. So I will make sure, um, you guys get those pictures. That way you guys can see the rooms. I mean, like, like I'm saying, they are long enough, but are less than five feet width. I mean, the, the width is only-
Okay, so is it existing non-conforming for off-street parking? So it's already non-
It is.
Okay. And, um, the, can you go back to the site plan so we can see the encroachment in the side yard setback? Okay, so it's carrying out that same existing non-conforming line? I see, I see, okay. You're not changing the, anything else on the site besides the expansion of the, you're not turning something into a parking spot that wasn't before or anything like that?
No, no. It's just the back wall, two and a half feet, that's it. So everything else, as you can see, is very much existing, so.
And this is a rental property?
Uh, he lives in the first floor, actually. And, oh, yeah, he rents, uh, yeah, he went the second and third floor.
Okay, well, I, I'd like to recommend that we, I'm in favor of this proposal. I mean, if the goal is to enhance the, um, life safety aspects of the building, then, um, I'm very much in favor.
I agree. I don't think anything about this project is concerning, it's just creating, creating livable space.
Is that a motion? Okay, well, I would like to make a motion to recommend this to, or that we approve this proposal. And- I will second that motion. With, um, our standard conditions as applicable.
Okay, made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed?
So you'll come back to the zoning board here on June eleventh.
June eleventh?
Yes.
Okay. Great, you're all set. Sounds good, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. And the last petitioner of the evening is- is case 2024-8 at 43 Everett Avenue, Juan Portillo. Okay, you need to identify yourselves and give us an address, your residential address.
My name is Juan Portillo. Este, con respecto al caso, este, cuando tuve la primera audiencia. Yeah, my name is Juan Portillo. When I have, when I had the first hearing. I think, thank you. Este, el plano donde se quiere poner la tienda es, está la división que sería... Is that division that I wanna put up? From there to there. Hay dos secciones, aquí divide una pared, una pared con una puerta acá, donde tengo los vecinos del estudio. Esta área está vacía, donde quiero poner lo que es la tienda. La tienda no tiene que ver nada con lo del estudio. En esta área, yo quiero poner lo que es la tienda. This is the area where I wanna put up the convenience store. Aquí hay una división. Here's a division. Aquí está una puerta. It's a wall and a door. Allende los, donde es oficina donde tengo lo del estudio. That's where I have the studio. Si un gen, si la gente entra a la tienda, va a entrar a la tienda. Si la gente quería al estudio, se va a venir y va a trepar arriba. El estudio no va a tener que ver nada cuando la... If the people wanna come into the convenience store, we'll do it this way, and if they wanna get into my studio, they're gonna walk this way, all the way to the back. Here's the emergency exit. That's the Wallace Street. That's the main entrance. And there's another emergency exit right there.
What do you mean by studio?
Is it a studio apartment, is it a, what do you mean by studio?
It's a photography studio.
Mostly for passport photos, is that what you say?
Sí, yo saco fotos de pasaporte. I do take passports, photos. And I hand pictures. The area that I need is a very small, what I need for that purpose, and I have all this space empty.
Can you just see some images of the facade, the other...
I'm slightly confused, okay. Is the address 43 Everett Avenue? Because I'm looking at 43 Everett Avenue and it isn't that.
Yeah, it was, I was having a hard time finding it on Google Maps as well. Yeah, but that's the building.
So is it 43 Everett Avenue or is it some other address? Because I'm not sure where this place is.
43 es el building. El espacio que tengo es la 47. El building, todo el building es la 43. The building itself is 43. And the space that I have is the 47.
So, only because I do have a doctor here. 43 Everett Avenue is a ton of doctors' offices, there's MZA offices, so this project sounds fine and all, just, I'm not sure exactly, like, where this project is happening.
It's right next to the Mariachi restaurant.
Yeah, but...
Well, it's kitty, it's across the street from Mariachi.
Will, this proposal change the way people egress the building from the upper stories? How do people on the second and third floor get out of the building? Do they use either of those doors? Okay, I can see on the front facade, how about the second?
That door is just for myself, solo para usted.
Okay, how about the...
Esta puerta es la, el building de ellos. That door is for that building. And that's the emergency exit. Have two emergency exits, that one and that one.
Okay, so the people on the second and third floor, they also use that door as an emergency access? They need to have two means of egress. The occupants on the upper levels need two means of egress. I am wondering if they would be sharing that door with the studio.
Sí, ellos también usan esta. That's one of them. Yeah, ellos también usan esta. ¿Y cuál es la otra salida? No, esta. ¿Es solo una? No, no, o sea, ellos usan, la principal que ellos usan es esta. El segundo piso, el tercer piso usan esta. Esta salida, el building tiene una escalera. De emergencia. De emergencia. So they got two, so the main entrance for the second level is over there, and that's the emergency exit.
Okay, so you're gonna have residents interfacing with people going to the studio inside the door? Really, you should keep those...
Como, de las personas que van a entrar a la tienda, me dice. No, no, no. No, no se me entiende. Esta entrada, este, que, que lo ancho, es solamente es para mí. No, no es para el building. Solamente es para mí. That entrance right there, that it has kind of a gate, it's just for myself, for my business, not for the other people. Esta es la de ellos. That's for the, the people who live in...
I understand that, yep. So it, it seems as though there's an existing non-conforming situation where the residents of the building share the same emergency egress as the commercial tenants.
Eso no, o sea, esta es mi puerta, ellos no entrar acá. This is my door. The people who live in the building, they're going to that door. Esta es la oficina mía, ahí no entra nadie. Esta es la de ellos para el segundo piso. Yo no puedo entrar acá, si yo entro acá, voy para los, para los pisos para arriba. That is the one for the people who live on the second, second floor. El mío es este, este.
Yeah, everything sounds okay. It sounds like there's a single entrance for the convenience store and a shared exit with the second and third floors.
Can we go back to the floor plan?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a shared door, this one right here.
That all sounds good. Also, this is probably for, for John, the address is actually 47 as opposed to 43.
Okay, and there's a vestibule.
We should probably update it.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, okay, cool. Figured it out.
Yeah, I think, it could... When people come to the studio, is it by appointment only?
No, como solamente para, yo normalmente, un 98%, lo más median solamente gente, gente de pasaporte. Yo, yo no hago sesiones fotos adentro. No, no. It's not for appointments, walk-ins and all that kind.
Okay, but what door do they primarily use in this new scenario?
Es esta, esta, pasaría, donde yo quiero poner lo de la tienda, la gente pasaría ahí, para acá, donde está la oficina. ¿Esa salida? Sí. The main exit, walking all the way to the back.
And would they exit back through that main door, I think is what people are asking here? Are they gonna exit back out through Everett Ave?
Eh, si yo quiero, yo puedo mantener esa puerta abierta, esta. Si usted me dice, bueno, te damos el permiso, pero tú lo puedes abrir esta puerta, yo puedo abrir esta puerta. Yo, yo, a veces yo la mantengo abierta, el cliente puede salir por ahí, no es necesario pasar por acá. Sometimes I keep the other door open, you know, if I get an approval, I can let the people walk out on the other street.
Do you own the building?
No.
Okay, I would think that the landlord and the condo association would need to be part of this conversation for how people are entering the building.
Okay, no problema, él puede venir si él quiere. He could come if he wants to.
But I don't think, I don't think there is going to be a situation with people congregating in the vestibule. I mean, he's adding, he's asking to add some, I'm guessing, for, you know, it's a convenience store, you're talking about adding, adding, selling sodas, chips, snack food, that kind of thing?
Pues así, yo no vender nada de lo que es láctea, lo que es leche, crema, queso, nada de eso, solamente lo que yo quiero vender es lo que es soda, candies, es nada, es todo lo que yo quiero. Yeah, just, no dairy, just snacks, sodas, stuff like that, no dairy.
No lottery tickets?
No, no, no cigarros, no cigarros.
Yeah, my only concern, just to clarify, is the safety of the residents who also use that stairway because if you introduce a convenience store, you're gonna have a lot more people coming and going, and it would, you know, it's a security issue for the people on the second floor. But that can be solved with door hardware, so that, you know, it locks in that direction, and if you put signage on the exterior of the building encouraging people to enter from Everett Ave facade and discourage people from using the Walnut Street entrance.
Okay. Say that again, if he locks, what? The other, he said it was emergency exit only.
Yeah, it's only an emergency exit.
Yeah, it's just an emergency exit, so I don't think the people are gonna exit or enter through that exit.
Esta salida, sorry, esta salida solamente es mía. Lo del segundo piso, tercer piso, ellos no están usando, salida solamente es para mí, entrar y salir solamente es para mí. Esta es la de ellos para el tercero piso.
It has a door you can see. He believes that he'll have his guests or customers be able to lock that door?
Esta solamente es para mí, ellos no tienen que ver nada con esta salida. Solamente es para mí.
No, she's, we're, no problem with that. She's talking about the rare one, that secondary exit at the back. That should be marked as emergency exit only.
Sí, está marcada solamente para salir de emergencia. It's marked as emergency exit only. Yeah.
So you come in, you get your photo taken, you come in and out the same door, right? That's all we want, and that, and that the emergency exit is shared by you and the people above you. Very simple.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, are you planning on selling cigarettes?
¿Va a vender cigarros? No, no, no. No. Solamente yo quiero, lo que yo quiero vender es agua, soda y candies y es nada. Use water, soda, candies and snacks.
Excellent, awesome.
Nada más. That's all.
I would like to propose that we approve this project, not that we know how to get in and out of the building in more ways than one.
I will second that motion.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
With our standard conditions, including that there is signage that that rear door is emergency exit only?
Sí, está el sa, ahí está el sa.
And then a signage plan for the, the business itself with this new, I don't know what you would call it, or business plan. I mean, signage that says it is studio and convenience store, we need the signage plan.
Okay, so, so we're asking for two things that pertain to signage. One is for the safety of the residents upstairs, and that's just by putting some signage that says emergency exit only. The other request is more of an aesthetic one, so we can review what you're proposing for the exterior of the building on both Walnut Street and Everett Ave.
So, yeah, we have a motion, we have a second.
Okay, made and seconded and conditions enumerated, all in favor?
Aye.
So you come back, come back here June 11th for the zoning board vote.
Thank you.
I think that's me.
Because this is me.
Yes.
This is you, this is me, we have a lot of...
Before you proceed, is there anybody who would need Spanish translation?
Doctor, you have a request for it.
Can we take a little break?
Yeah, that's where everybody's...
Okay.
So...
Self-helping.
Five minutes?
Five minutes.
John, is this, this door's locked, right? I didn't know where to get in.
Yeah, you don't know where to get in.
Is this your recycling box down here?
That's recycling. They're taking a five-minute break.
Sorry, I just flushed some water.
So you have your three zoning amendments that I'm gonna discuss. And you're, and you're making a recommendation... And you're, and you're making a recommendation to the city council on these one.
Did you get the, again? Possible. I'd say it's in the line.
Council, how you doing?
Likewise. How are you? Haven't seen you for a ye, leasing year.
The fire office, personnel.
Yeah, yeah, welcome to Massachusetts. Yeah, it's, uh, upstream is, uh, yeah, under Satan. Yeah, right, in spite of the constricted territory. Yeah, as a lifelong resident, it always reme, amazed me that there were people like you in the Commonwealth. What? You don't know? He's a conservative, Republican. There's no, there's no politics in Massachusetts. Yeah, there are no politics in Massachusetts. That's why they call it the People's Republic. All right, is everybody that calm, yep? Okay, we're going to, uh, John is going to lead us through three zoning amendments to which we have to, about which we have to make a recommendation to the city council. Mr. Dupree.
All right, so you have three zoning, the first one is relative to marijuana facility hours. There is a provision in the zoning that says, specifically marijuana retailers are prohibited from operating between the hours of nine PM to nine AM. This did come before you last fall, and you did recommend approval to the city council. The city council did take it up, but they did not pass it. They are now reconsidering it, and they're asking for your input on the proposal. And this is, there's a public hearing as well, and there is a gentleman who would like to speak.
Do we get to speak first?
Hi.
Do we get to speak first, or he gets to speak?
It's up to, it's up to, up to chairman.
Is there, I wonder, is there a, uh, what was the industry you think it was?
Right, that's the same question.
The industry is here.
Speaking of the industry.
Good evening, my name is Richard Su, I'm one of the co-founders and chief compliance officer at Harbor House Collective located on eighty Eastern Avenue. I'm here in support of this motion that we've been very in support of for the last few months. This is to give us equal footing with other industries in Chelsea. Ideally, we're trying to match the hours that we see liquor licenses and liquor stores actively operating in. We think that we've been a very productive industry for the city in terms of tax dollars, in terms of employment. And we've had very little, if not no incidents that would be opposed to, pose a risk to public health or anything like that. So I do hope that we reconsider this, and I do hope this, uh, this motion goes forward. Thank you.
Is this on? Okay, thank you. Good evening, thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Kay Doyle, I represent Green Star Herbals at two hundred Beecham Street. I am also one of the original cannabis control commissioners, so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the industry. But I would also add to Mr. Su's comments that we believe we've been productive and engaged corporate citizens of the city of Chelsea, providing tax revenue, providing our employees volunteer time. And we would really love the opportunity to revisit the issue of expanding the hours.
For comparison's sake, are there any hour restrictions in Everett, Revere, Austin, Cambridge, other close-by cities?
Uh, we don't operate in those particular communities, so I would have to get back to you on that. But each municipality under state law is allowed to set the particular hours that they are comfortable with. The purpose of the adult use law altogether was to try to regulate cannabis-like liquor stores. So what has been proposed would be consistent with the purpose of that state law.
Okay. Yeah, overall, I'm definitely in support of, of driving clients to Chelsea. If it's ten o'clock and you're trying to pick up at a dispensary, I prefer customers come into Chelsea as opposed to going into Everett or other dispensaries. So I support opening, um, opening operating hours for dispensaries in Chelsea.
I honestly don't see any need to change what we approved last year. You know, as shown on the slide here, that the hours of operation will be controlled, determined by the licensing commission. We've, we approved that once, and I'm ready to approve of that again.
I also am.
Is it, Mr. Su?
Yes.
If, if you were to dictate the hours, what would you propose? Like, when is it, when is it most optimal for your business, just so that we understand what you're asking for?
Um, currently, we definitely could see additional business even in the beginning of the day, as early as maybe eight in the morning. And then we do see a lot of opportunity until about eleven PM.
Okay, so no one's proposing a twenty-four-hour?
No, not yet.
But you're, okay.
We don't intend to do that.
I will make a motion that we approve the proposed amendment as we did in the fall.
I'll second that.
Did the council want to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll just say, I have absolutely no objection to this, I think it's reasonable. I think we've seen over the last year that there's no major, you know, I think people, it's, it's okay to be cautious in, in the beginning. I think we've done that, and I see no, I'm gonna have no opposition to this.
Okay, so again, I will make the motion, oh, I am so sorry, Leo, I didn't realize.
It did, it did come before the council, I mean, there was a little pushback. I don't see any reason not to allow them to do business. I know some of us who choose to go out after nine o'clock, we might wanna run and stop in a liquor store and get a taste before going to where we're going. So that could also happen if we were going out and then we indulged in marijuana, it would be that same kind of thing. So I don't see a problem with it.
Okay, motion and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None oppose, any opposed? None.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, the next one is a tattoo and body art, gee, I wonder who proposed this? Yeah, I was just opposed by the planning board. These uses are currently allowed only by special permit. And what the ordinance does was add, it's add definitions for body art, body art establishment, body passing, and allows the uses by right in the, in several districts and special permit in the, in the port district. This is what the planning board voted to pass on to the council for consideration.
I'm a little bit confused why this is coming in front of us again.
Right.
Because you pa, you asked to pass on that council, goes the council, by state law, the council has to send it back to you for public input. Not, not just yours, it's open to the public. But you, and then you have to provide a recommendation to the council.
Okay.
State, state law.
Yeah, okay.
Not your rules, I get it. Yeah, at our prior planning board, I think it was maybe February or something, uh, Chelsea's Department of Health came and, and assured us that all future tattoo shops are gonna go through a process involving, uh, ensuring that all employees are trained in sanitation. It's the same spot, I don't think that you're able to tattoo without several hours as an apprentice. I'm glad that there's gonna be, uh, strong oversight from Chelsea's Department of Health. And, um, yeah, I still, um, am in support of this.
I'll second that, was that a motion? Was that a motion?
Not officially, but.
It's a, it's a public process, you have to open it, open it to a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, I, I didn't make any motions.
Yeah, okay, the, uh, planning board will listen to members of the public who wish to address this topic. Seeing none, I'll close the public session, public part of the meeting. And has it been moved and seconded? No.
You're right.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion to recommend, um, the, the ability to open a tattoo shop by, by right in the following districts, PR, PR two, BHSC, WU, NHDC, and by special permit in the P District.
Second.
I will second.
Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And last but not least.
Someone's having some fun.
Rather than displaying the prior, the floodplain overlay district with a six-page draw.
You're giggling over there.
Don't we have a chance to read this?
Thank you.
So, the city participates in the National Flood Insurance Program, which makes it easier for residents in the city to get, uh, to purchase federal flood insurance. Without it, they would not be able to purchase federal flood insurance, and it would be very difficult to find affordable flood insurance on the open market. Very recently, in the past six months, FEMA updated the floodplain maps. But don't worry, the, the, the changes were so minor, they don't show on the maps, because it's, it's matter of inches and feet. At the same time, adoption of those floodplain maps requires the city to update the local floodplain ordinance. We do have a floodplain ordinance, but they need to update it. And the new ordinance must be in place by the time the map's going to effect July third, two thousand, twenty twenty-four. So there are a number of amendments you'll see here, and I'll just summarize each one. Basically, the first amendment just adds new definitions to the floodplain ordinance. The second one delineates the extent of the district by referencing the new maps. And the third one requires applicants to provide base flood elevations for each parcel or subdivisions or developments with more than fifty lots or more than five acres, whichever is smaller, in a city like Chelsea, that's gonna be rare. First of all, there hasn't been a subdivision in, in the thirty years I've been here, there's been three subdivisions. The next amendment four requires the city to notify the state and FEMA if it receives data that changes the base flood elevations. Amendment five requires the city to notify adjacent communities, the state and FEMA, if there's any change to the, uh, we, change or alteration to the river. Amendment six designates the floodplain administrator. Requires permits for all development in the flood or, uh, flood overlay district, and requires developers obtain all necessary permits before proceeding in development in the flood overlay district. Amendment seven, no new fill or new construction or substantial improvements in the floodway unless we can show them that the work will not increase flood levels. Amendment eight, the building property must obtain, review, and utilize base flood elevation, floodway data for new construction, substantial improvements, and now development in Zone A. Amendment nine, recreation vehicles in A and AE zones must be elevated and anchored. To best my knowledge, we don't have any such vehicles in those zones. And number ten requires, uh, record-keeping, record-keeping required, it's relative to building covariances, requirements to inform property owners regarding potential inbound and flood insurance premiums if they don't follow it. Adds additional requirements for criteria for zoning variances in the flood overlay district. States that the floodplain prediction for the ordinance doesn't imply total flood protection, adds a severability section. And that's what, uh, the whole ordinance does. And I thought there might be some confusion over Zone A and floodway, and I just added some definitions here for your references. Will not be in your, your reference as to what a floodway is and what a Zone A is. In fact, this probably shows you better what a floodway is. And basically, it's that area of the river channel that would flood during high water, or during, during a hundred-year flood.
Okay, so just to confirm, amendment seven, that isn't referring to the entire floodplain?
No.
Just that specific section.
Just that, just that area defined as a floodway.
Okay. Given it seems like we're kind of a force, that we're forced to approve all of these amendments in order for Chelsea to have access to FEMA flood insurance, which is important. I'll put forward a motion to approve all ten amendments.
Motion recommend approval as presented?
Is, is there an option to? Yeah, um, as presented.
Okay. Technically, the board does have an option to make recommendations.
It sounds like an awful idea.
But the, but the, but the city, the state is going to want to recommend, uh, amend it this way. They won't accept any other amendments.
Let's just say, example of, of a community that would not want to adopt this?
Well, um, you know.
Does that make sense? Is it a good question? I just don't understand.
No, I understand what you're saying, I'm just trying to put my thoughts in. Chelsea is lucky in that it does not have the same impact from flooding as other communities such as Revere or, um, communities that have.